Good evening. It's time to call the Leamster School Committee meeting for tonight. We're at Francis Drake School. Could everyone please stand up and make such an appearance to the class? By such an appearance to the class, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To read our school committee statement, the committee represents the needs of all Leamster public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leamster. Welcome, everyone. We're going to open up our public forum at this time. If you would like to address the committee, please come forward to the microphone in the middle here, state your name and address for the record. So if anybody would like to address us, please come forward now. A second try. Would anybody like to address the committee? Please come forward. And one third and final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, now's the time. Not seeing anybody come forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting, and we are going to respond to the superintendent's... Communications, sorry. We have Dex here, Assistant Superintendent Jim Riley, who's joining us. Communications.
Thank you very much. Two communications have been presented. One is for...
Thank you, Mayor. Two communications have been presented, one from the Leamster School Administration, U of U, requesting the starting negotiations beginning this July 2018... Like 2020, excuse me. And also from the Leamster Education Association, which is requesting the reopening of negotiations for wages during the 2021 fiscal year. One thing of note is that the school committee would have to have new representatives to represent us in those negotiations.
Right. So I think we are willing to certainly go forward, but we're going to wait until after January, when the new members are elected, and we figure out who will actually be servicing on the negotiation. Okay? But we appreciate the heads up, and we'll get to work on that when we get this passed through in operation. All right, thank you. Any other communications?
A few thanks to the superintendent's report, but those are the only communications.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Superintendent just wanted us to note that there is supposed to be a messy commute tomorrow. I think she does a wonderful job communicating with the other city departments and the mayor, making appropriate decisions, but she will do her best to make sure that message gets out in time and manner if we're impacted with either delay or cancellation tomorrow. The other thing we want to make people take note of is that we'll be entering into winter break, December 23rd through the January 1st. We'll be returning to school on January 2nd. Certainly wishing all our families and staff a happy holiday, hopefully a great time with friends and family during that festive time of year. But one thing we wanted to make sure we made note of as well is that today is the final meeting for some of our school committee members. Nona and Cody, just personally, you know, my experience with both of them. Nona, for someone who worked at the high school level, I was always amazed how much we saw you in early childhood, whether it was advocating for us to get playground equipment or attending ocean day event. We truly appreciate all of your service. And Cody, I always watched you when they did votes around here, and you know, you always tried to figure out if somebody has something that they were especially interested in or promoting. And for you, I always thought you just simply wanted those best for kids and took every single vote, every single decision too hard. And thank you both for your tremendous service and the time that you dedicated.
Pouring some on your side, we go through the program. Is there anything else in the superintendent's report?
That's all I can do.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Do we have a student report? I know we are supposed to. Awesome. If you can please come forward, that would be great. So come right up to the table and the microphone. I knew there were supposed to be two of you. Is your other partner up there?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Craig. My friend, Dominic, was not able to make it tonight. We're both freshmen out of Leamster High School today. Here are a few highlights happening at LHS. So academic news, progress reports, reporters who have gone out. Today is the 71st day of school. It's around the be the day 72. Very snow day out. There's supposed to be treacherous driving conditions tomorrow, especially in the morning commute. You might actually want to end this meeting a little early. We're getting ready for break, and there are a lot of exams and projects this week. Seniors are beginning to hear from colleges for early acceptance, junior college night in post-grad planning is in January. The book "Fair Response for the Media Center" was held at Barnes &amp; Noble, the core form. Fine arts news, the art club kicked in business windows around the town last week. The Waldorf concert was held last week. We featured our chorus and band. For sports news, in case you missed it, we won on Thanksgiving, beat Pittsburgh 7-0 in the 125th and first game of the game. Great day for our band, cheerleaders, team, fans of the city. The Bruins and National Guard sponsored the December Blue last week, encouraging leadership and positive choices. Winter sports have started. Boys hockey being a showable last Saturday, 5-4. Basketball opens up tomorrow against Mall versus Mall World. The boys are home and the girls are away. Wrestling is going to begin soon, and we have co-op with Wachusen. Fourth indoor track, the meetings are going to be held very soon this weekend. And as far as our fun news, Daniel Best Buddy's Door Decorating Contest is happening, lots of entries. Daniel Fest's sweater contest is on this Friday. And on Friday, the holiday break is coming. We're going to enjoy some time away from the brat. Very happy. And on behalf of Leamster High School, we'd like to thank Ms. Ojala and Mr. K. Hude for their... Can't read my handwriting right. Oh, for the service on the Leamster High School Committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So school ended like this week, like a month off?
It's much later than what you think.
Parents, keep them busy, I could say.
So now we're going to move on to Francis Drake's presentation. Mr. Vera, if you'd like to come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming tonight to Francis Drake. It's always a pleasure to have you guys here and get Louis Drake first hand, right? So, look behind me. Seriously. Well, thank you, parents, for coming tonight. It's always great to feel the support from the parents, and tonight is not an exception to that. And so we're going to start you off with a... We're going to share this period a little bit. We're going to start you off with a much more delay. We're going to have the Francis Drake Chorus come forward. If you can hear me, just come out. And we're going to enjoy that presentation, and we'll come back with part of my data team members to give you another very short highlight of things that are going on here in school. So we're going to have the Francis Drake Chorus come forward for this presentation. And this is what we do every day. Teachers come in, we work with the students, and this is one of the very rules, right? Working with kids and see how they... Just makes us happy, it's important. We're going to give you just a couple seconds to set up the projector here. I want to give you guys an eye to know a cool sign of it. Again, thank you, parents, for your support. You're welcome to sit. However, the music teacher informed me that you're welcome to meet them in the lobby. And thank you so much for coming in tonight for the school once again. So thank you again. So now with the... Not so serious, just a couple highlights about the school. We're very excited this year with some of the initiatives and some of the pieces that we're pushing through, as our friend Dominic refers to often, to move really forward, right? I want to acknowledge tonight my data team here with us, as well as Mrs. Hess, our assistant principal. We have Mr. Nate Arbor, who's part of our data team, as well as Mr. Robin Nelson, who will be addressing you in a minute. Won't take long. But basically, we wanted to just highlight those aspects of the school that we are... We have the year in which we design a new school improvement plan. And so it was very timely, the fact that we have to come up with a new one, with the creation of the strategic plan for the district. And so tonight, you'll see some of the pieces that we are pushing forward as they are linked to that effort. We'll make a little bit of reference to past practice and to see the connection move forward. One of the big works this year is on equity, and that will be, as you've seen, the pitch for the strategic plan is reflected in objective number one. So you will see some of that as well. And also, you'll get to see some of the pieces that we also have created, a part of that effort to bring equity into the forefront for the school and for the district. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to our data team member, Robin Nelson, who will just speak to us regards to that piece on equity. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Jessica Ariseth. We are now beginning our work under the plan, and as part of that, we recently had some training, thanks to the district, on unconscious bias, which is the belief that we all come to our jobs and to the table with certain implicit biases, unconscious biases, whether we're aware of them or not, and that we need to be very conscious as educators as how these things are changing and how it impacts our students. And while that we do come to the table with these biases, that research shows that if you take the time to lay them out, understand the cream where they come from, and have discussions about them, that we can recognize them and have them in order to better be there for our students. Part of this is recognizing that unintentionally creating labels for students, for example, being allowed special ed, and how these labels might then prevent us from allowing children to reach... I hear my teacher voice. And so the purpose of this is to make sure that we understand that as teachers, that we may be kind to our classroom of unconscious biases and creating labels for our students and that might help them, but by doing so, we need to make sure that we're not unconsciously preventing them from reaching their potential by setting standards that maybe need where they can actually achieve. So as part of this training, led by one of our classroom teachers, Nick House, we created a video that we want to share with you that's used to school both and our students.
All right, so enjoy this one. This was a very own creation, right here from the school, as part of one of our videos at the beginning of this school year.
Now, with those of some of our recent school improvement plans, we're basically looking to create a culture of problem solvers, where the students come to their challenges with strategies to help them push forward, to realize that it's okay to make mistakes. A few years ago, we did Metacognition, which is basically thinking about your own thinking. Go and understand the problem. What are the resources available to me? Checking your thinking along the way. The quote mindset is, basically, it's okay to make mistakes, it's a good thing to make mistakes, and showing the students that that's the way your learning grows. And the social emotional piece is making students feel comfortable, feel safe in school. And without those things, you know, your brain really doesn't physically grow. This year, Mr. colored the book, "Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain," and this is actually getting more into the neuro science and how the brain physically grows when you think. And so I know I've talked nice means about this, and they really get into it. They're buying into it. They think it's great that the brain is physically growing and creating pathways by making mistakes, by taking chances. And I can really see my students get into that and relax in the school. It's really a tribal thing, which is really nice to see. A big thing is learning new knowledge is need to feel safe, which is what the book talks about a little bit. And it's also connecting, everybody wants new things, by connecting it to what they already know. And it's pretty cool to see the kids buy into this. It's either the brain reacts, it's either fight, flight, or freeze when it's faced with a challenging or a threatening situation. So we want the students to be comfortable in the school, to know that if they make a mistake, it's okay, you know, there was not a pressure on them. Not the pressure of having to... So this book, we're, as a data thing, we're really interested in. So we're, I'm about to throw away this book, it's really interesting stuff.
Lots of quickness, all right with that. Last one.
So, we need to, I'm also part of the writing grant for the county district. And it's really thinking about how I teach writing, by making those connections, you know, to new knowledge. In the past, we presented, or traditionally, we present kids with rubrics and rules, and there's a lot of information across us before they even start to write. And what we've done with the writing grant so far is, we let students, we show them an example, we'll do a mental test, we'll read aloud, and then we'll be able to go ahead and make progress. Don't worry about when it looks up, you don't have to be perfect with it, have fun making it. And they love, they're getting into it, I have students that are taking their reading and writing journal out to recess with them, which I have never seen that before, because they're having fun with it. And by doing that first, they're able to make connections. And when we do start introducing more complicated ideas and concepts. So no restrictions, and I like to think about it as, if I go to Target or someplace in my Bible case, and I need to put together, I'm not reading all those instructions, I will just start putting it together. And chances are, there's going to be some screws left over. And that's okay. And you know what? If I get stuck, I can go back to the instructions and read the instructions. And that's kind of the approach we're taking with the students as well, that just try it. One of the, one of our consultants has said, we have to honor approximation. And so, let them get started, play what they're doing, and then we can work out what's on there. And it's really, you know, so far, it's been Iowa, and it's really changed the way I've taught writing and reading and actually everything else. So, so far, good stuff, and I think the team is on it. Thank you.
So once again, thank you for listening to the pieces that we are trying to push forward this year. Feel free to come by anytime. I know some of you visit us from time to time. I turn around and I see someone turn the corner, and we are always very impressed and happy that we visit. If the weather holds, tomorrow's the prime time, we have our holiday concert tomorrow. I'm sure that it's one every night this week, I'm sharing in different schools. So if tomorrow doesn't hold, then we already send notifications home, we'll be opening it on Thursday night. So you're all invited, and you know, hope you enjoy it. Thanks so much tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation by the chorus. We appreciate that. Moving forward, we're going to... Are you hearing me, if you've got this?
No, it's a little, you sound a little closer.
I feel like I'm on top of it today.
Okay.
All right. We're going to move forward with the people of service presentation. We have Kim Woodford come up and join us.
Sure, can hear me? Hi, everyone, nice to see everyone. So I'm excited to share some of the highlights and some of the busy work that we've been doing since the beginning of the school year. In your packet, I started off by just sharing some of the demographics of special education that we have, students that we are servicing in Leominster right now, which is about 1,475 students, as you know, that's going to change throughout the year, but right now, that's the number that we're looking at, which is about 23% of the students in Leominster who have been identified with special needs. Right now, for students who are out of district, we have about 89 students that are out of district. We had quite a few move-ins this year, and so probably about six of those students were students that moved into Leominster and already had a placement. And it's always, when we start to go to those meetings, it's always, they're coming from another district, we have a great opportunity then to talk about what kinds of resources we have. Sometimes Leominster has more services than other districts do, and so we have some opportunities to have those, start those conversations with families and talking about what is restrictive environment. Some of the things that I started doing when I first came to Leominster is really looking at the programs. There's a lot of new programs that have started since I was here 10 years ago, and I wanted to really get myself familiarized with those programs, how they're working. It's always great to do a little program review and just to see what the challenges are, what people are finding, and things that have strengths in a program, things that they have questions about. And so, I hired a consultant to come in and look at two of our biggest programs for students with special needs, which is our AVA program, and then also looking at our student support center. So our AVA program is a program that supports many of our students with autism. And it's been wonderful to look at the continuum of that and how it's working, for really looking at our resources and trying to, and what does that mean to keep sustaining that program. Leominster has really done a nice job of putting that program together with some goals and great staff that's well-trained, and you know, they're starting to look at different ways that they can take data. You still have to grow with those programs, look at the new researches, looking at what other curriculum that we might want to look at, so we've started to do a little bit of that, inviting some other schools, other district schools that have curriculum that's working really well for them, and asking them to share that with us, because we know with their research base, and they might be something that we'd be interested in. And Walker School actually just started today. They are a school for students with high social emotional needs, and one of the things that I really like about Walker School is that when students tend to go to their school, they do a really good job at stabilizing students and getting them back to their district, and they really work collaboratively with schools. So I'm hoping that we're going to learn something from them, and they're going to come in and kind of look at our programs. Today, they just did a walkthrough, got this meet staff, got to see the layout of how our support centers are, because we've got quite a continuum of our student support center. And then we're hoping that they're going to be able to come in and make some recommendations to us, and also do some professional development on spot. We have Circuit Breaker audit this year, which was really kind of a nice thing for me to walk into the district and sort of see how Circuit Breaker has been implemented in the past, how it unfolds, what the challenges might be. So it was actually a pretty successful audit. We had one of our CPAC meetings already this year. We did, our first meeting was Understanding a Child's ADHD, Autism, Anxiety, and Social Emotional Learning. We had about 10, 10 people come to the meeting, so we're trying to figure out ways to get more parents to come. I was actually really pleased with the turnout per the beginning of the year, but we're going to be looking for other ways to get parents engaged and come. I want to hear, you know, what they're looking for, what are the challenges that they're facing. And so, we're going to try some innovative things, have some activities for students so that maybe parents will be more interested in coming. We did a little bit of daycare this time, but I think we ended up with a few more parents for that tonight. So far, there's some training that we've done for our staff, it's around 504 training, that's something that we should be doing every year anyway, but we wanted to really beef up our training, look at some technology that we could be using to really track students' accommodations, and also to find ways to have everything in one place so that teachers will have a great focus point when they're thinking about their students who apply to school. Jim and I worked together, having our lawyer, Cat Lyons, come in and do a training with our vice principals around restraint, bullying, and harassment. And right now, Jim and I are working with the attorney to start looking at the documents that we're using to track those things, and to update them, and to do a follow-up training once we have all of those documents ready. We did some restraint training with some of our staff, and one of the indicators that we had to do when I first got here was Indicator 14, which looks at students with disabilities who have graduated. And there were many schools that had to do this indicator this year, and it was interesting that Leominster, when we looked at the data, we had the most resources from students who have graduated. So we've got a nice picture about what students are doing, and obviously, they were excited to share that with us. And we've done, I've done some training with our coordinators around IEP placement and when to consider changes. We've been looking at progress monitor training, when we're looking at students who are not making progress in the district, what are we doing, how are we responding to that? And so, we did a little self-study, and each coordinator kind of looked at at least three students on their caseload, and reported back some of that data, and we got to see sort of how people are responding to that, and what are people thinking about. And if that is something that we want to be responsive to, and so I'm getting some nice information back from teachers and from the coordinators as to how we're responding to that. We had our attorney, Cat Lyons, come in to a roundtable with just the specialized coordinators, just talking about what are some of the trends that we're looking at, and just to talk about some of the policies and procedures that we need to update. One of the trends that we're really starting to see is really getting challenging to forecast is the number of foster children that we're seeing coming into district. And we did some training as a district around how to respond to that, but it's really hard to forecast what's going to be happening and how many kids are going to be coming into your school, so it's hard to forecast. We did some training with our secretaries, how to ease that, because there were a lot of new tools that were available, and we wanted to review a lot of our internal documents with our secretaries around, you know, what, how are we tracking, are we all doing it the same way? And they never really get a chance to all meet together, so they kind of came together as a team and talked about some of the tools, and tried to find some Google Docs and some other ways that we could be communicating with each other. So some of the things that are coming up are, it used to be called the CPR, the Coordinator Program Review, but now it's called the Tier Focused Monitor, and it's a self-study that we do in special education. And then next year, the department will be coming out and talking to us about how, what our self-study looks like, they're going to be asking us the full files, they're going to be asking us for some of our documents. For me, it's fortunate that I'm getting to do this right now, because it's really helping me understand what are some of the things that I need to look at, but more closely in the district, so it's giving me a next focus on the resources that we have and some of the tools that we're using. Right now, for our early childhood program, we're trying to look at other schools and what they're using and what they're doing. We're actually, we've had quite a few aha moments, because Leominster seems to be quite a bit ahead of the game in regards to early childhood. We have really good teachers and teams that think very deeply about students that are transitioning to our schools. So we're trying to do more partnerships with early intervention. Obviously, we see early intervention and we work with them, but again, we're so busy, we don't have enough time to kind of work about what are the challenges that they're facing, what are some of the ways that they're getting feedback also, as to when students are first coming to Leominster, how are families feeling about their first introduction to the Leominster public schools. So we have a brilliant director who's being hired next month for early intervention, and then the coordinators and I are going to go and visit with her to talk about what her goals are going to be and how we can partner with her. So two big events that we have coming up, the parent workshops, we have Sarah Ward coming and we're to work with parents on executive functioning skills, she's going to be the topic. Sarah's actually coming on March 9th and doing professional development with all of our staff, and then she was kind enough to extend her visit for that day. She's going to stay until the evening and do a presentation for our parents, and we're inviting other community members, like already reached out to Gardner and Fitchburg and some of the other communities to see if any of their parents want to come, or if any of their staff would like to come to that workshop. I haven't heard Sarah speak, but many people have, and are unpacked, have heard them before, and said, you know, she really does help parents understand how to get their child organized, and how, what kinds of skills and resources they could be using. And then April 28th, we have a transition there, I'm very excited about this, because we've been talking about, when I first got here, Lauren Van Dorn was the coordinator at the high school, she really wanted to put together some kind of transition there for parents, or we were trying to think outside the box, and Seven Hills has kind of put something together, so we're going to partner with them, which is wonderful. They already have about 20 vendors that are going to come on the 28th. I think we're going to be doing it at the Elks, but there'll be a flyer, we'll post it on our Facebook page. But the flyer is going to really have a lot of descriptions of all the different programs, because sometimes we say to parents, oh, you should come, MRC will be there, well, they don't know what that is, what that resource is, so we're going to try to have a flyer and information so that we can get lots of our parents in the community to come. So far, I think we're up to 25 vendors that'll be there, so that will be nice. And hopefully, Leominster will have a little opportunity to showcase too. We're going to ask our best buddies programs to put something together and be there as well. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me?
Great, Sue. So Kim, you hired a part-time other district team chair, who's doing the other district report?
See, Sander was doing it before.
Yeah. Okay, so that was a need that...
Right, right.
Okay. And then on the CPAC, I understand that they have regional meetings?
They do.
With the CAPS collaborative?
I've been attending those, actually.
Do we, or do our...
We have not had anybody come to those meetings as of yet, but they're, we're hoping to expand on that. There's actually a lot of knowledge, people coming with a lot of skills and background, and we're talking about how each of our districts can participate. Fitchburg hasn't had, doesn't have anybody representing either, and hopefully, as the year goes on, we'll have that.
Right, because they get, I guess they get funding for speakers and stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it would be an opportunity for our own CPAC to get the information?
Yeah, and this, when we're doing the transition, that is what that CPAC is doing, they're helping organize that as well.
Okay, and then just generally, what's your opinion of the status of special ed in our district, since you've been on board?
I just, you know, people work really hard in this district, and I'm reminded of that every day, and you know, they're seeking to deal with the challenges that they have. And so, when we're talking about having Walker School come and look at that social emotional program, you know, the staff themselves, before I even walked in the door, they were coming together as a community to problem solve together and looking for some guidance. And so, you know, that's our population of students that everybody struggles with. We've gotten really good at handling some of the other areas of concern for disability, but the social emotional comes with, each of them has their own story, and so the way we respond is really important. So the people that are working in those programs are seeking that information. So I think, you know, I'm really enjoying going to the meetings, hearing how people are sharing information, giving some feedback, but overall, the coordinators have done a really good job of being great mentors and supports to their schools. So when you go into the schools, you see how much the principals rely on those coordinators and niche them in their schools.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, the HR report?
There's a, in your packet, there's a brief review of some of the positions that have been filled recently. There's no new positions. There really is one position that had not been previously filled, that the rest of them are due to retirement or just replacing the individual.
Does anybody in committee have any questions or comments on that? Thank you for providing that to us. We're going to move right on to the club updates. Steve, if you'd like to go forward and give us an update?
So these are the most recent numbers of, what I was asked to put together was the number of students and weekly meetings, or number of times they meet during the year. For some of them, especially our class officers, that would be, it was almost too difficult to try and pin them down for each one, it varies obviously from grade to grade and time of year to time of year. But everything else is pretty standard, and most of them have a pretty set schedule with no pay out, so I think it's pretty self-explanatory in front of you. The deadline for fees was yesterday, so David Blazi has been kind enough to work to collect those fees out of his office, much like we collect user fees for athletics. I did not see him today, but we'll... I did not see him today, but we'll start the chase for anyone that has not paid that fee. It's roughly down the line, it's probably about 650, between 650 and 700 students. Some of those kids could be in several clubs. So it's, I guess, 650 to 700 seats, but it could be. And, you know, I don't have an exact number of those. It's good.
Ben, has there been any major pushback around collecting the fees?
Collecting, okay.
Well, for us receiving them?
Yes.
And, and how are you proposing to deal with that?
Well, that's when I go tomorrow and ask David over where he's standing with us. So, yeah.
Well, I know, I'll speak up. I know we've been approached, the Wine's Club, to assist with the theater fees. You know, I've just been hearing a lot of negative about these fees. You know, a lot of these groups are service groups, you know, honor society. How can you ask people to volunteer and donate their time and then turn around and say, oh, by the way, we're going to charge you? It doesn't make sense. I mean, we really need to rethink this whole fee structure. I, seriously, I think it's really...
I would be of full support for you in that discussion, or at least starting it. I'm not doing it right now, but if you'd like to me to come back.
I mean, seriously, I, you know, and like I said, they're going to go to service organizations now to ask, oh, that's...
I think if I can just speak, even the non-service organizations, I'll just use Art Club for instance, okay? They don't have fee, they don't have a budget per se for supplies. So when they go and paint downtown, for instance, they raise money to get that paint to then go and do that. No, they do ask for a donation from those businesses if they care to, but I know no one wants to do that. I get, I get the whole discussion we've had, bad nauseam. So I don't want to still bring it back up after I prepared what I prepared.
So what are the fees for that? I mean, you just talked about fee, right? So let's take, let's take our...
Sure.
So what is, what are the fees? How much do you collect?
I think it was to offset, so...
To offset the stipends. And that's what the purpose of, right, for the advisors, for the teachers who are being paid.
So the fees go to candy device, collecting, and any materials? Okay, so...
No materials.
Okay. But they pay for the, they pay for the personnel, right?
Or portion of it. It's very small for a...
Where's the rest of it?
So it's very...
But the stipend should have been budgeted for anyway. We know it's a yearly expense.
I mean, I think that, and again, this is like sort of an argument that we've had, you know, folks are charged one fee for the year, no matter how many clubs and organizations that they belong to. And as you pointed out, probably many of these, you know, students are in a variety of them. There are certainly some students who are only in one. But it's comparable to, you know, sort of the sports and, you know, fees and everything else. And at this point, you know, we're, it's trying to be equitable for anybody participating in the extra activities. We also have a policy that any parent who's unable, family who's unable to pay, that we can make arrangements where they don't have to pay or could be in traction with it. All they need to do is to, you know, discuss that with the appropriate personnel of the school. So that lack of payment should not prohibit any student from being...
Okay. So I think we need just a more comprehensive look at what is the, how many students participate in each, what you've done? What are the costs for each?
So I can go there.
How many students pay? How many students can't pay? That's the way to have a conversation about it, not to just say we shouldn't charge fees and then just say, you know, well, we painted some windows, when in fact, we're paying stipends to people. This is a false story. So I think we need more comprehensive discussion about this. And then I think we can build on that based on all the information rather than just on...
We appreciate you coming forward, Steve.
Sure.
It'll be an ongoing, you know...
Yes, it will. Happy holiday for you, Ron.
All right. AP testing, please? Nancy?
Happy holiday for you.
In your packet, you have a graph which provided you with the five-year score summary from 2019 back to 2015. The, what it provides you is the number of AP students with a score of three, four, or five, which would provide those students with the ability to achieve a BCP college credit for their course.
So it looks like there was a decrease of students taking AP courses? And do we know why that is?
There are a couple of reasons that we'd like to put on the table. The first one is that the colleges and universities have stopped taking credit for Physics 1 and Physics 2. They were only looking at something called Physics C, which is either electricity or mechanics. In 2018, we had over 70 students in Physics 1 and Physics 2. Physics C is a higher-level physics course, and some of our students may have chosen to take honors physics and not the AP Physics C. So that was a sizable number. The other component is that we have a variety of pathways now for our students. We've heard from someone from Washington and Fitchburg State about the early college pathway that we have and the dual enrollment. Those courses every year are increasing in enrollment for our students. And it is in addition to AP, but there are a few students who do all of this. So many of them are opting to do the early college pathway or to do the dual enrollment instead of doing an advanced placement course. So those are the reasons. And we spoke with Maggie Dinosatidis, who is the guidance chair. And that's what the guidance councils are seeing and showing from students. So they have opportunities. They're adjusting pathways than what we had traditionally with AP.
And if you just kind of keep on that point, if they take that course in passive, they're going to get pre-college credits, apply back, and whereas if they don't pass the exam after a full year of work, they may not get that.
How many of these courses do we have now at the high school?
No, off the top my head, I would say 13 or 14.
But there are, yeah, there are some...
Specifically at the high school, VHS ones as well.
Well, I think some were, when I was there, there was 14, but a couple of them were the VHS courses.
We still have some that are VHS and they're low incidence, macro and microeconomics with five students in those, or computer science, or art history, which are one and two. But the, the number that we have traditionally that are fully enrolled or at least one section, if not more, is approximately 15.
So we certainly have a good variety of...
Just out of curiosity, five years ago, I just did a question of the area schools. We are the largest serving AP program in the area. Schools are not, I don't say that because we're better than them, or bigger, so we have to say no kids here.
Any other questions?
I'm just giving a, first one, yeah, for the total students, a much larger number of exams, so obviously, kids are taking a couple of them. These AP students with scores of three or higher, so now you're back to counting students and not advanced, is that correct? Is it 121?
No, we're talking about exams.
121 exams of three classes?
Yes.
As a 412.
Which would make...
No, I'm sorry.
And that's one, so percent of AP students, 72.5, which would be 120 out of the 167. So the number of exams which three classes may be hired, if a student has three, three, you counted them once.
Correct.
That's how I read it, yes.
Was there any discussion on the cost of the AP scores as part of why there's a decline in participation? Is that a deterrent for some?
It's never come off. I, yes, it's expensive. You know, I mean, I have two boys that present a set of twins that I think they wrote a check in on words of involvement, you know? So it is expensive, but I don't think it's ever been a deterrent. Once again, I echo, if there's an issue, we'll find a way.
Right. I didn't know if that was sort of like dis...
I think, you know, I think you want to treat it as more like college.
Yeah. Yeah, it's becoming more...
Yeah.
Isn't there a discount at the APD if you're, for your reduced lunch?
There is.
Yes, yes.
Ron?
When you said that this form, how are you learning, going with the Physics 1 and 2 and just the other type? What happened? You said Physics 1 and 2, they're taken the account, but then you named other physics. What happened?
And that's a decision that's done by the, by advanced placement, by the board. That's not something that we're privy to. But they did have three different levels of physics in the past, 1, 2, and C. There might be a Physics E too, that I'm not sure about. But that's a decision that they, that they have put forward. We're not privy to that. And we did let our students know well in advance, because they let us know this last year, that this would be taking place.
I think, wow, so now there was also issues with like a chemistry, what kind of level that was a number of years ago, that, you know, certain tests and certain classes were counted and not counted, and things like that. So it's always evolving, I guess is my point.
And the same thing with calculus. Yes, calculus AB, calculus CD.
Right. What is it? Is it the rigor, the test, the rigor of the study?
We don't know, Ron. We just, they stopped offering those two tests.
Who's that? Who's that testing board? People provide the AP test. They can't just all of a sudden pick it out of the air.
They can.
It's what they did then. It's what they did, they only needed those two tests. And I don't know, aren't physics wanting two tests anymore? There's just Physics C. They used to offer three tests, now they only offer one. But there was a process. They never business, but we aren't privy to that. If the testing board just decided to do one test and did three.
And where does DESC stand?
Nothing to it.
What it affects, how students are studying and experiencing school or college? No, it's an independent board.
Right. And we do offer honors level physics so that the students can receive a higher-level physics course without taking the AP. So that would not negatively impact their GPA. So they have the opportunity to take an honors level.
Now, one last question. Are you noticing any AP courses that maybe need some help in us sending the teacher to some training, you know, because the scores aren't up there or...
I think we have those discussions continuously, not just at AP, but across the board, in all.
And are any teachers going and doing the scoring?
Yes, I know.
Because I think that's a big...
One is here tonight.
Good. Because I think that's a big help.
It's a huge help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Prepare time.
I just want to say, I agree with Ron. I mean, that's a legitimate question to ask, why suddenly this...
I know, it doesn't make any sense.
...this change without some sort of notice to fairly people who are impacted by it.
Saying why this happened?
And if it's, if it's the attempt to try to get students to enroll in college early on, and that's fine. And obviously, colleges are seeing a little bit of a decline, so they're looking to sort of get in, in a relationship with students early on, which is somewhat of a marketing technique. And I think Ron's got a legitimate question as to who are these people and how to make these decisions? And who's to say they're not going to make decisions down the road that are going to affect our students without the ability for us to have some sort of comment or input on it? So I agree with Ron. I don't necessarily have problems with it.
They're not going to do it, it's discussed, something had to happen.
If I may?
Some school, somehow, somewhere, something had to happen, all of a sudden, boom.
That's information we don't have with us tonight. And I'm sure that...
I'm not doing...
And I understand that, but if you wouldn't mind, let us go back, because there was guidance as to the decision about Physics 1, 2, and C. And we'd be happy to get that guidance and bring that back to you.
Great. And maybe even just can give it to superintendent who can, you know, disseminate it. I don't know that we need to have you, you know, come back here and talk about it, but just to, oh, that would be great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next item, which is 210 Lancaster Street. So, Mr. Mayor?
So several months ago, or many months ago, we asked, that's the Lancaster Street School building that the police station was in for temporarily. And it is now vacant. And the plastic museum, Lancaster Street School, plastic museum, police station temporarily. And so we wanted to sort of some feedback in the school committees to whether they were planning on using that building or not. We're trying to get an answer by September. We didn't. Time just kind of, you know, things got in the way. So we were looking for some sort of feedback in the school committees as to whether or not they're going to use that building and take ownership of it, so that we can go back to the city council, report back and either declare it so or so not.
So I think, you know, for me, and I don't know how the other members feel, is that, you know, it's been sitting sort of vacant for a period of time. I don't know what it would need as far as renovations, to be brought up to code, to utilize, you know, as a viable, you know, school alternative. I know, you know, many years ago, we were talking about using it as an early childhood center, but nothing at that point in time had sort of progressed. And I think before we can make a decision, we would need to know, you know, sort of whether it would be a cost-effective building for us. If it needs $5 million worth of, you know, bringing up to handicapped accessibility or wiring or whatever, you know, where would we get that money from? How would that, you know, work? Because it has been vacant, and as you know, if it's vacant for two years, not being the price of the school, everything needs to be brought up to today's codes.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. We were absolutely...
So that would be my concern. I don't know what anybody else, and I don't know whether you have that information or know about it or if you've looked at it, but I don't know what everybody else is feeling.
I, my feeling is, I mean, I always wanted to see an early childhood center that, that would bring the classrooms that are at Sanusette, the classrooms that are at Bennett, and the classrooms that are at Priest, together under one roof, under one leadership principle that would make it easier to manage, manage it. But personally, I don't think Lancaster is big enough for it. And we would have to do a lot of work at just reconfiguring the building, let alone a play yard out for kids to play on. And I can't see another way of using that building than any other...
A lot of perfecting.
Right. In any other educational situation that we might have. I just think it's not very cost-effective for us to take it on.
So we did talk about an innovative school. I think we talked about APRS, TB. Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I think maybe the administration can go back and...
I mean, I think really...
This is for it.
Right. I mean, I think the real issue is cost-effectiveness and what needs to happen, and we haven't been in that building in so long.
But there is, it is up to code, David.
It is.
I mean, I don't know, again, I don't know what it would take...
For a school.
I don't know what it would take to convert it into the use that you're looking to turn it into, so I can't answer that. That's what I thought was happening all along. But I kind of believe, you know, things get in the way, get busy. But I really don't want to hang on to that building any longer than, you know, the longer it sits, the more, that's what happens to all these buildings, the longer they sit, you know, vandalizes and et cetera. It gets cold, nobody checks the building, the pipe spray, and I get another problem. So I would really like to be able to bid it out and see if there's somebody else in the community that is interested in it, either purchasing it or leasing it, or whatever might happen. And I, you know, we're going to go through another winter, we have to keep the heat on, have somebody going to check it every day, alarms go off, and we have to go... on, have somebody going to check it every day, alarms go off, and we have to go check it. So it's work for, for our staff to maintain that, and I, it's, it's got elevator in it, and it's got fire system. I mean, it's, it was, you know, it needs some things, but I don't know the extent of what it is.
Again, I think it's cost, you know, we've got to look at the cost effectiveness of it, and the fact that we need some money to, to update our buildings that we currently have. That some of these buildings are in sad shape and need to be addressed. Many issues need to be addressed, as you can look at our capital improvement list, that we need to concentrate on that.
Jim, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I was just. Superintendent's office. Yeah, I was going to say, the superintendent, and myself, Creative Choices, Early Childhood Administration, they've all been in the building, they've looked around, and I think very similar to what you had echoed, there was a feeling that there'd have to be a major feasibility study to see what could happen with that space, just the way it's currently constituted, and both upgrades, and then also, you know, looking for like a space to eat, things like that. We also did give some consideration to, would it be a possibility to have some connection to a CTEI, early childhood program, because we've talked about trying to bolster that. But the biggest issue is it would take a major study to do so, it would take over a year to complete that, and there'd also have to be a major funding source identified to have that study completed. So I don't, I don't think we have the data. I think we'd be wary of how we'd have to get the data, how much money it would cost, and how long it would take to do it.
Would you like to?
I know that there was a lot of money spent on the inside that we, for, I think it was, they spent about $100,000 on the inside for the infrastructure, for the wiring, whatnot. But that's my biggest fear, how much money, how much more money are we going to have to sink into that? I just assume that we just forget about it, just give it away, you know, let the mayor and the city take care of it, get it off our hands, because, yes, we do need a place for early childhood, there's no denying that. We need to have a site for that, but that side of Lancaster is not it. We have to, we have to say goodbye to it.
Yeah, yeah, just a case. I don't want anybody to admit that we're misinformed. Nobody was trying to get the school built in there. The school department asked for some time to look at the possibility of using the building for something else school related, before we declared surplus and put it out for sale or for lease. So we're not in the building. It's not, it's a turnover. Over, it's just a question of getting some feedback as to, do you want to, do you want us to transfer it into the school department's name or not? And if not, then what will move forward with declaring it surplus?
I think.
We have no, the city has no use for it.
I think it's too much money. It's going to have to be spent to make it. Well, it sounds like a luxury. It sounds like it writes off. You're offering to us that the administration had a use for it, and we should ask for it. Sounds like we don't, we shouldn't ask.
Right.
So, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we decline to, decline a little.
All those in favor? Post one?
Well, the superintendent's called school offer tomorrow. So a bunch of happy people for tomorrow. But not happy in June, but not happy in June.
It's for safety, but the trouble, it's supposed to be given Friday tomorrow, but I don't think it's tomorrow, it's supposed to be Thursday.
They'll be praying for snow, they'll be praying.
All right, we're going to move over to approval of the minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th, 2019.
Okay. Any corrections, omissions, errors? All those in favor? Motion carries. Do we have an approval for the finance subcommittee?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to approve the finance subcommittee minutes of November 18th, 2019, with two corrections. They're small, they're two typos. Item one, Cody's last name is misspelled, it's two, it should have two X's.
Famously known as Cody. Now, Col T.
The last sentence of the first paragraph of new old business says that I propose Austin should have proposed, proposed use. Other than that, everything is fine.
All right, do you have a second? Ron? All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving right along, I'll bring you the remaining two subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee.
Finance subcommittee, and we have some warrants to prove.
This is your last meeting.
The only will be the last time.
Okay, warrant twenty for $125,204.25. Warrant twenty-one for $2,501,743.77. Warrant twenty-three for $2,748,35.16. And out of grants and revolving funds. Warrant twenty for $22,905.76. Warrant twenty-one for $549,210.99. And warrant twenty-three for $231,925.39.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Sue, and any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those, motion carries. And what else do we have tonight as far as updates from the finance subcommittee?
Spent a lot of time looking at the situation that we've relied to us relative to indirect charges for fiscal nineteen, and those indirect charges for fiscal twenty, so that we can complete our end of year report. We're struggling with that a little bit. We believe there's numbers that are incorrect. More importantly, though, the requirement from Desi is that for FY20, we have an indirect charges agreement between the school department and the school committee. We proposed and voted indirect charges agreement in September, October of 2018. They have received a response to that. We've gotten from the city what we usually get from the city, so we're kind of now on the same page. I think if we had the agreement, if we hammered out an agreement, then we wouldn't have questions about the charges that we have, because we agreed to how they're coming, and we get that and everything that we go along. So it was the sense of the committee that we'd really like to, we would recommend that the school department and city get together and.
Did you already meet with the comptroller and the treasurer?
I haven't met with them recently. I have attempted to communicate by email and not gotten responses.
So maybe I can upset them, maybe.
But I think, I would be happy to attend a meeting and part of it, but the requirement, Desi doesn't care about me, they don't, my signature's not required, I'd like to have questions, I'd like to be part of it, but it's supposed to be a school department filing, the chair of the school committee has to sign, the superintendent has to sign, the comptroller has to sign. Those are the three people that's to sign the certification agreement, certification statement for the end of your report, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the indirect charges agreement is supposed to be signed by the superintendent and the mayor or the comptroller. We've been deemed in our audit we're not having that, there's been complaints about us not having that. So, we're hoping that we can get agreement, and then this stuff will become simpler, and we wouldn't have questions about things that we think are disruptive.
I did talk to the treasurer and the comptroller, they were comfortable, they said nothing truly changed. It's, you know, it's basically year after year, it was just a pass through, so they were comfortable with the numbers that they submitted.
So, I mean, I have questions about workers' compensation.
Oh, sorry, no, I understand.
The FY20 retirement number is significantly higher than what we've budgeted or spent so far, and I just don't believe it's going to be that high with any changes. And the charter.
School reimbursement.
Charter school tuition reimbursement has not been subtracted from it, you're supposed to report from that, not just, we've got our expense, but we have a subtractive.
So I did ask them to take another look at it. I mean, I can't, I can't. I, I think the misunderstanding is that I can go back and tell any department head in the city to do whatever it is that I wish. Like, I could call, like, I could call a teacher and say, can you change my kid's mark? You know what I'm saying? And so I have to make sure that these two people who've done this for years are comfortable with the numbers that they're recommending to me, because now I'm putting my name on it. So I've asked them to take another look, and you did point out the areas, and I specifically gave them those areas to take a look at. So hopefully we can get it resolved. None of us are going anywhere, so we're here for the rest of the year, and we're taking those days off, so we're here to the end, so.
And I do think, you know, the same for, I'm sure, superintendent, Deacon, and myself, we want to be able to put our numbers in accurate and not keeping that if not. And, you know, I think that probably now more than, probably all the other years that I've been on this committee, we really have a better accounting of our finances now that we fully implement annuitas, and we are sort of dealing with the up to date, and we know like sort of names and things that are attached to things. And so, I mean, I don't want us to be paying more money than, you know, we need to.
No, neither do I.
And if we owe more, like say to workers' comp or for the retirement fund, we know who's retired, we know how much, that's a finite, you know, amount, and then if it changes, then we can make changes to it, but we don't want to overpay and then never see that money again, because that's not money that we want to do to ours.
What we actually proposed was that we would pay workers' comp as a direct expense, like we do with unemployment, that's what we voted and approved as a request. Obviously, again, it's an agreement, so we can't do that unless we say we agree, but.
Well, I think the fear there is, what if you end up with a higher rate, and then you don't have the money at the end of the year? Now, now, and that's happened in a couple of different money matters, where we end up with the school fund ends up in trouble, so to speak, towards the end of the year, and then it comes back to us and the pressure's put on us, and then we look like the bad guys, we say no.
And I think that's a valid point, so I would like the, you know, the state or the city to have that conversation, agree on the best way of handling that.
I will orchestrate, yeah, I will orchestrate the meeting and get the parties together, so we can get some sort of.
Right, we need to be on the same page, and we don't want them to pull, to pull in our chapter seventy ones.
Yes.
And that's what, that's what they're going to do, because we haven't moved forward with this, and I hope we can have that meeting very quickly, so we can solve this and turn our reports in and have them accurate figures, and so.
Well, you know, the finance subcommittee might just be a little, what's a little conservative. I mean, we threw out numbers that it looks like the city charge factor is like 1.9 million overstated, and I think you hit the nail on the head when you said they use the same numbers, I guess that, but.
The same form, the same form.
Right, but things have changed, and I think, you know, to my credit, he uncovered the whole workers' comp issue, where we're getting credits and they're not going back to us. And, and, and I, you know, so that's fine, you know, we can let go of credits from 2019, but, but I think we do need to look at, you know, accurate, more accurate charge factors.
Well, listen, I do want to have an audit done, that's the best way to do it, because then you bring an auditor.
Well, we did talk about that.
And the auditor will do it, because, let's face it, this is, I don't know how, I mean, this, there's been case after case where we've been told we were wrong in the numbers, just later to find out. We've turned in our numbers for the state, former superintendent turned the wrong numbers. We were told we were under net school spending, that started this big wave of, of concern and meetings, only later to find out we were well over net school spending, so, and again, a probably, an audit would probably show though, that we're under, under, in a number of areas. For instance, plumbing, some of the maintenance stuff, things that the city could get charged back on. Definitely don't. So there's the fear. So I guess the only way really to come up with it is to take the two areas and really have an auditor look at them. I'm okay with that. I have no issue with that.
Well, maybe, but Michael fit in on the meeting with you, and then, but I don't think what it would do, but I think we have to adhere to the recommendations of the auditor, and I think that's the other short call, is that the city's audit always says, you know, you're doing this wrong, you need to sign agreement, and we just kind of never have.
But they didn't say, well, excuse me, they never said the numbers were wrong.
No, no.
The auditor doesn't say.
No, they said we need to sign agreement.
Okay, but for the record, the auditor never said that the numbers were wrong.
No, no.
You know, she said it's not.
I'm saying for the record, they've never said that the numbers were wrong, they said we didn't ever sign the agreement.
But for the record, it said, both audits, the school department's audit and the city's audit, said that we needed a signed agreement, and we do not have it, and we have not had it for years.
Well, we, we both signed off on it, but the numbers aren't being agreed to, the numbers aren't being agreed to by the school department, so both parties have to sign for it.
And, and agreements, we went to, you know, several of us, myself included, went to a celebration, cake and balloons and everything, about how the retirement fund is fully funded now, and yet we still see the same amount being asked of us. That should have gone down.
Oh, come on, now, that is totally irresponsible. You've been explaining that no less than four or five times, that's been explained to you. I'm not going to go through it again, Ted, there's no point in that. We've explained this to complete exhaustion on exactly what means when the pension plan is paid, and that this is a calendar year funding program, and we have to wait to see what our returns are on our investments before any other money can be dispersed. That is on the record, if you want, I'll pull the records, I'll pull the minutes on both city council, school budget hearings, and city, and school department meetings, and I'll submit it to you and triplicate it, if that's what you like. But that's not fair.
So, at this point, it sounds like it really would be both parties to sit down and have that meeting. So if you.
Absolutely, as I said, none of us, I checked, we're all here until the end of the year, until next year. None of us take it anytime long, we're here, we're not going anywhere. And if, if you want to commission an audit, we, again, I think they feel strongly about the numbers they submitted, that none of us have any issues with having an audit done specifically to these particular areas. If that would solve it and make people feel better.
So let's see if we can first work something out, you know, properly, and see if we can get an agreement, because that would solve many issues.
Yes, I agree, I agree. And it will perfectly.
Thank you. So, anything else on finance?
Yeah, we have a transfer request to approve. So, labeled H, do we have a report of the, just general, we've been requested through transferring $110,000 from line 4450 to line 450, if you like, to my, the full tax is a, because we're going from, it was more than $10,000, we're changing, it's going to be kind of a thousand dollar, it's part of the finance review, recommend two weeks, so I'd say.
Do you have a second? Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. Does it matter, would you like to give us an update on the policies that we've?
We met this evening, we went through section H and I for policies. We have very little updates, most of them include national laws, and so the next time we will meet, we'll have the first reading.
Thank you very much. So then we have some action items, and the first action item is the first reading of the smoking policy. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of the smoking policy.
Do I have a second? Ron? All those in favor? Motion carries. Then we have the, we're, at this point, we've already talked about the year, year end report, so we're not in a position to go in that with that. So Chris, if you can roll that over to the next meeting, please.
At the next meeting, or whenever, can we get the percentages? I didn't see the percentages in the year spent.
Percentages over for this year?
Right, so we should be at the end of this month, we should be at the halfway point. So we should get an understanding of where we are on all of the different line items charted, running a surplus or whatever, or depending, seasonal surplus.
Right, thank you. So now we're moving forward to new and old business. We've already talked about the city agreement. E-rate update?
Talked to Stephen morning before the meeting, we've received the needed documentation from the city, and it's being processed by the business department. Thank you.
Great, that's good news. Yeah. And the E O Y submission update?
That's at the end of year.
Oh, end of year first, sorry.
Let's take it in charge.
We've already talked about that, I've seen it here a couple times. Okay, so now, sort of going on to new and old business, I wanted to acknowledge that tonight is known and encoded. that, uh, tonight is Nona and Cody's, um, last, um, official school committee meeting. We hope that both of you will come visit us as, uh, you know, people out in the audience and not visiting.
Especially on those cold weather nights.
On the Monday. But I do want to say that, uh, Nona, I've really appreciated all your work, and you have a nice perspective, having come from an employee within the school system. Um, so you had a neat, unique, you know, sort of understanding of how things work, particularly at high school. Um, you were invaluable as vice chair. You were extremely active and vocal and a strong advocate for the students of Lamonster, so I appreciate everything that you've done. You've put in a lot of, you know, hard work and dedication. So, thank you very much. Um, for Cody, um, you also have put in a lot of hard work and dedication. You have been always somebody who's been very thoughtful and planful, um, and really who's somebody who's considered, you know, sort of all sides, you know, of an argument or issue. Um, and we appreciate your due diligence and commitment to, um, the students of Lamonster. You, um, sometimes are quiet, but when you speak, um, it's with, you know, you know, it really is, you know, a point well taken, and it's something that you really have thought about and, um, are passionate about. Um, so we appreciate, um, all the work that you've done on behalf of the students. And having said that, I'd like to call up, uh, Natalie Higgins to, uh, come forward, to, to present.
I'd really like to thank the two of you for your leadership. Uh, and it's not every day that people leading our school committee are at the Capitol so high. Uh, work with the House of Representatives today, and you just cite patients, thanking you for your leadership. And I know it doesn't start or end with the school committee, um, but I've just really appreciated your voices and your partnership in the things that those students and faculty and staff of Lamonster have, that they, that they need.
Yeah, I know, uh, Nona, I believe she would like to, and I don't know whether Cody would want to address the committee, but we'll let Nona go first, ladies first.
Always have to get the last word in.
Do you want to go second, then?
No. And this is my last meeting as member of the school committee. I wanted to thank the residents of our city, especially Ward of War, for their support over the last six years. It's been my pleasure to serve you and your children. I also want to thank the members of the school committee and the administration for your support. I've learned a lot from each one of you. In the past six years, we've had good times and have overcome some significant challenges, and now we are on a good track to grow our system with the help of increased money from the state. I'm glad to have been a part of that, and as I feel our system offers our students an excellent education. I feel that I accomplished a lot in my short time on the school committee, serving on negotiations for most every union, serving on the grievance committee, as well as the finance committee and the district capacity project, as well as being the committee's secretary for four years and vice chair the past two years. The only thing I regret was that we could not bring three preschool and kindergarten together under one roof. I encourage all of you to continue to work on that. Good early childhood education is the foundation for a successful educational career. I encourage the new members that are joining the committee to be engaged in our system, to take time to visit the schools, not just to see a performance or to enjoy a spaghetti supper. Administrators, teachers, and students like to see you visit. They enjoy showing you their school and what they are doing, and I want to thank every school for welcoming me to their school. Again, thank you, and as strange as it may sound, I'll miss you, but I will be, um, watching you on TV, and, um, I'm not leaving too far from being part of schools, because I've been asked to be on the school council as the community member to Johnny Appleseed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, did you mind if I interview you?
Sure. Just, um, quickly, um, thank you to the voters. I'm certain repeatedly, you know, placed their trust in me. It's been such an honor to do this, and it's been so rewarding. Um, thank you to everybody on this committee, every single person. I've learned so much, and it's been an invaluable experience, and really a privilege to work with each and every one of you. Um, special thanks to Nona, who really has been mentor to me, um, throughout my years on this committee. Um, I really do believe the best seers in this district are to come. I think there's been immense improvements over the years, and I look forward to getting to see, you know, all of that, with great things to play out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other, um, anything they want to say, or any, um, other new or old business?
Oh, this is, I know. We certainly will. You guys are gonna be, you're gonna be hard to fill your shoes, and I think you've got...
And we have some wonderful people coming on board with, um, their own sets of skillsets and strengths, so we're looking forward to that. But, uh, you guys are irreplaceable nonetheless. Thank you again. I'm a phone call away if you have a question.
Okay.
I'd like to add that I really appreciate having both of them and Cody on the line yesterday, and they're almost as helpful there. I'm not looking forward to having her do the work myself. It's been nice having her do that for me for two years. But thanks, thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, can you do a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
And happy holidays, everyone.
Where's our Christmas cookies? No Christmas cookies, nothing?